I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. The first matter I'd like to bring to everyone's attention, folks will notice that Vice Chair Demonts is not here this evening. She had a family member who was being interred in the Arlington National Cemetery today. And so she was attending that. That is something that had been scheduled for some time. As folks know, we had this meeting scheduled on December the 10th. She believed her schedule would allow for that meeting, obviously. But once our meeting got pushed off to the 17th, then she was unable to attend tonight. I know I joined my fellow supervisors and thinking our thoughts and prayers are with her family. And so that's why she's not going to be here this evening. The next item is on our agenda is a moment of silence, and then I would ask the county administrator to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is presentations, and we've got Courtney Rogers with Davenport LLC to give an update on the county's debt capacity and discussions of the Montgomery County Public Schools' current solicitation for new schools project.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to see you again.
Thank you, sir.
I wasn't going to introduce Christopher, but I'm going to since he's helping me. Christopher Holt here is actually being, he's interviewing with us. And he's going to be in our office all day tomorrow. And I said, if you want to see what we really do, come a day early, and I'll bring you down because I'm actually doing a presentation. So he's been with me all day. We've made several stops along the way as we came down. So it's good to see firsthand how, what we do in the public finance world. I was asked to basically come to the board and talk a little bit about two things, really. One is the impact of how a project that might be financed under the PPA might be viewed by the credit markets. And then secondly, we thought we'd update you on where your debt capacity is. After several years back when we issued a large amount of debt for various schools, you know, we've been working through that. We're finally below our debt service to expenditure 12% cap. And those of you might remember, we issued that debt. We already had the plans for the Auburn schools, Auburn Strand, two schools. Then we had the Blacksburg High School issue, which was an emergency. And the credit markets gave us a pass, if you would, because of that emergency. And so we've now gotten down below that point. You will see that on one of the slides here. Actually, please, this slide, clicker, sorry. Second person. Relax and sit there talking to somebody in front of you. Where's that presentation? So, first thing I thought might be helpful, I understand there was a meeting about PPA. I guess it's been maybe a couple of months back. And my understanding was it was talked about that the Virginia Attorney General Office consulted about an opinion of whether this type of obligation has been discussed at PPA level, especially for the city of Bristol, was going to be considered debt. And I wanted just to make the point that while this question had legal ramifications for the city of Bristol, cities and counties in Virginia are different in the way that we can issue debt. As many of you may know, in cities in Virginia, you can issue debt as a general obligation without a referendum, as long as it stays within 10% of your assessed value. For counties, we can issue above 10% of our assessed value, but we have to go to a referendum to get that ability to issue a GO bond. That was the extent of that question was because the city of Bristol is at their debt limit on a legal basis. So the real question, though, I think, for Montgomery County is, what does the credit markets think from the standpoint of debt limit? So it's really not a legal question here for you. It's a question of what are the credit markets thinking? So that's one of the things that we're going to tackle here tonight. The other thing I want to point out is that we, especially if, I don't want anybody going away tonight saying, well, Davenport does not want to do a PPA. And that's not true. We actually did, and were involved in, a PPA when we did the Blacksburg High, Auburn High, and the old Auburn High School. Now into middle school, the county schools used the PPA process for that. And we were a part of that because we didn't issue the debt on the county side. So the one thing that I think is important to understand is that the county can go issue debt on a taxes and basis a lot cheaper, lower interest rates, than the private markets. The only way that they could ever do it, they'd be in the private markets, cheaper was if there was some type of tax credits or something like that. And those are, those types of programs are usually very large scale projects that take a couple of years or more to come to fruition, is my understanding. I've talked about, I've talked to folks about those in the past. The investors of those are very sophisticated. It takes several years to kind of pull that type of program together. And usually, they're, they're very large projects. So if the schools want to use PPA to go through and do this project, assuming that they get a green light to move forward the project, our recommendation is, let's do this as we've done in the past, use, have the county issue debt and be in control of how the debt's issued, and, and issue that as least rated bonds. I want to take a minute to just talk about the importance of credit rating. I know some of you have heard this before, but credit, why do credit ratings matter? Well, obviously, if we get a very high credit rating, we go to the market and borrow, we get the lowest cost of borrowing. That's the, the main thing. But there are other reasons, too. For instance, economic development. It's very key, in some cases, to your economic development success. These companies look at your credit rating because they can talk about the governments, the management, the financial health of the locality. Those are things that can be very important. So they, they've got to make a decision. Do we want to move to this locality and bring our workers here, and hire workers in that locality? They want to have an understanding. So our higher credit rating says, hey, these guys have their act together. And we are knocking on the door of the highest credit ratings that we can get right now as a county. Obviously, strong access to the credit markets. 2008, when the credit markets were crumbling, those who had the highest ratings were able to secure money as needed at the lowest rates. Those with lower ratings had to scramble to even find folks who were willing to buy their debt. And if so, it's usually at a higher interest rate. I always like to talk about the things that, that the ratings agencies are looking at. We're going to cover that in the next couple of pages. And when you look at the big picture, it's really four things. The local economy, financial performance, debt management. And of those four, there's really one that you don't have that much control. Yes, there's some zoning things that you can do, but the economy itself is, is very large, and it takes a while for it to really shift. The things you have the most control over are your financial performance, amount of debt that you issue, and then management side. And so when you look at the four credit drivers of a credit rating, basically Moody's and S&amp;P have a third of their rating category of economic base. A third of it is financial performance and flexibility. When you look at debt management, it's split a little bit. Moody's is 20% debt, S&amp;P 10%. And Moody's is a little bit lower on the management side, S&amp;P a little bit higher, another third, 30%. So keep that in mind as we talk through some of these things. Standard and Coors, there's two big differences between S&amp;P and Moody's. And the biggest is S&amp;P has these basic, these percentages for different areas. They give you a score of one to five. And they basically factor it out and come up with what they call an indicative rating there. Once they have that rating, they can only go up or down one notch. So let's say the indicative rating came out at AA+, which is our current rating at S&amp;P. They can go up to a AAA if there's some things, the load line factors, if you would, that push you up. Or they can go down one to a AA. But they don't have a lot of room for moving but that one notch. So they're very numerically oriented, which is one of the reasons why we focus very heavily on those top, that top line, to make sure we can get the best score we can. And if you look on page seven here, their observations, when they upgraded us earlier this year to a AA+. They gave the local economy, strong, which is a two. One being the highest, very strong is the highest level. Strong economy, local stabilizing institutional influence, which they're referring to the university at that point. So that's very good. The folks who are getting very strong are places like Northern Virginia, Richmond area, Hampton Roads. So strong is very good. Management conditions, very strong. That's a lot of the work that you all have done, working with your staff, working with ourselves, and putting policies together. We've, we've checked all those boxes. Financial planning, making sure you have a CIP, that you're getting certain reporting, things like that. That's where the policies are very important. Institutional framework, in Virginia, all the local governments get very strong. That's the best rating. One of the main reasons is because you can raise taxes with one vote of this body. In some states, like my home state of Alabama, you have to put it out to a referendum. And so they're not going to get as high a score. Basically, what they're saying is, our governments in Virginia allows for, if in an emergency you needed to raise revenues, this, this body has the ability to do that. And so that is important to the rating agencies. Budget flexibility, you got very strong there in terms of, that's basically looking at your fund balance, that not only fund balance levels, but also looking at the types of expenditures and whether you've got room to make cuts in a type, emergency type situation. Budgetary performance, as in adequate, that's basically in the middle of the category. I'll tell you that it's almost impossible to get the highest rating there. For whatever reason, they set it at 5%. And basically, not many local governments are going to have revenues over expenditures at a level of 5% or greater. So adequate is actually not a bad score to get. Liquidity is very strong, highest we can get there. Again, that goes back to having cash available in terms of emergencies. And then debt and contingent liabilities, again, 10% of that is the, is their score, and that's inadequate. So that's a three. So if you see that's a little bit on the, right in the middle, not necessarily weak, but it's not really strong either. So when we look at Moody's, they have a similar factor rating scale. They look at some sub-factors such as fund balance levels and tax base size. They look at your debt ratios, debt score value, debt to revenue. But the difference between Moody's and S&amp;P is, they don't put as much weight in whatever that factor score comes out. For instance, I have another AAA in this state that actually scored as a AA3, which is the lowest of their AA's, but yet they still were AAA because of all the other things that that locality had going for it. So I use that example to say, this is important, but not as important as what S&amp;P said. They don't actually show you how you score, but what they do do in our rating report, and the last time that Moody's did a rating was in 2016, you have a AA1, which is the highest rating next to AAA. And one of the things I wanted to point out that they said, as it pertains to what we're talking about tonight, is they said on the credit weakness side that you have an above-average debt burden. And one of the factors that could lead to a downgrade, they mentioned, is increased debt burden. So that's why we have to be careful about our debt burden and what we're doing there. Always like to talk about fund balance because that is one of the key things on the financial performance side they look at. You've been very good keeping your fund balance right at your target. And when you look at other funds outside of your just general fund balance, you've got other funds that are in capital, set aside for capital, and things like that, that in an emergency, if we had to tap into it, you could, they give us credit for that. So that's some of the things that helped us along the way, especially to get that AA+ from S&amp;P. On the existing tax-supported debt side, we're currently at 158 million of debt. Payments right now go through basically another, let's see, basically 14 years, you have 2032. If you look at the 10-year payout ratio, how fast are we paying our debt off? We're paying it off at an exceptionally high rate of 84%, which is very, very good. And we know, when you look at that graphic, that in about four years, we're going to have a drop down in debt service. Right now, we're about 21 million. We're going to drop down to about 17.7 million in 2023 or four years from now. And so that will allow us to bring on some more debt in that, in that timeframe. And I'm going to mention this because I think at one time, there was talk of issuing debt over 20 years. Typically, counties are issuing debt for these types of projects, buildings and such, at a 20-year level for long-term infrastructure. Usually, we see utilities like water and sewer plants, pipes, things like that, for utilities issuing at a 30-year clip, because those assets typically go longer. I mean, in 20 years, you should be replacing roofs, you're going to be doing maintenance on these buildings. So borrowing over a longer period of time just means that you're, you're streaming out the payments a little bit longer, and there's going to be something else in the wings that's going to be needed before 20 years are up. So where we stand right now, in the light green in 2019 is our projected amount. We are at debt as a percentage of assessed value, well below our policies of 3% and 4%. And you can see, we just went above the lower end of the policy in 2012 when we issued the, this debt for the Blacksburg High and the Auburn schools. And then we came down below that. And that's been, not been a big issue for local governments in Virginia on the, on the assessed value side. When we look at how you compare to others, though, you can see on the left-hand side, at the very top is where we are. National medians are on the lower side. And I'll take a minute to tell you that the reason it's so low is that for the majority of states in this, in the country, school districts have separate taxing types. So as a result, medians tend to skew on the lower side. So the analysts know that. And so they're, that's one of the reasons why we look closer at our Virginia medians. And you can see that Virginia medians are much higher than the national medians. And you can see the AA2s are a little bit higher, AA1s a little bit lower, the AAAs, and even the AA3s are, are lower than some of the AA1s and 2s. So it's not all about this one ratio, but just wanted to kind of give you a sense of, of how you look versus others. In fact, when you look at the AAAs, most of the AAAs are lower, although there's a couple of Northern Virginia localities who have ratios that are a little bit on the higher end. When we look at the AA's, AA1s were right there at the, the top end of that with Rona. But the AA2s, you can see there are several that actually go much above that line. Where most of the Virginia localities have issues are in the debt service to the budget, where how much annual debt service are we paying, is that 21 million, divided by your total budget. We issued the debt in 2012, so 2013 was the first year that our debt service spiked up. And you can see it went well above our 12% policy, up to almost, well, let's say 15%. And we knew it was going to take several years to get down below that. And so 2018, we got basically at that level. And now in 2019, projecting to be below that 12%. So we've got some capacity now to do some things, but not, not a lot immediately. Where it really starts dropping down, again, is in four years, when those payments drop down to the 17.7 level. So when we, again, look at the comparison to the national median, the Virginia medians, the AAA medians, you can see that Stafford's the only one that's out there above us. When you look at the AA side, on the right-hand side of the page, you can see we're well above the other AA1s. There's a couple of AA2s that are out there. And I know Caroline, in particular, they, they don't have self-supporting utilities, so some of their utility debt's included in that number as well. So that's one of the reasons I know they're farther out there. And that's where we are now, before we take on any additional debt. So what we did is, we did a, we call a debt capacity analysis. And when we look at those two key debt ratios, the one that we bump up before the other is really that last one, which is the debt service to expenditures. So we said, okay, let's assume 20 years' level debt service. And if we went to the market today, I'd say we're probably around a 375 rate, but we used 4% when we did this analysis several weeks back, just kind of a round number. And when we put that together, and we said, okay, how much debt can we issue to get back up at that 12% line, maxing it out? So we could issue 16 million right now, today. Another million, let's say, in 2020, another 12 million in 2021, 6 million in '22, and then 36 million in '23. So let's just look at the five-year period and say roughly 72 million. And that gets us right against that 12% policy. If we go to 5%, if rates were to jump, and I will say this, we're not expecting rates to jump, but I just wanted to give you a sense of what happens if rates were to jump 1%. That falls to 66% over that five-year one. And the reason is, of course, we're having to issue debt at a higher interest rate, the debt service is higher, and so as a result, you don't have as much capacity. But I'll go back to that 4% page, 17, and just know that this is over a five-year period. So if we issued all that today, 7, let's just say 70 million is a round number, we're still going to go above for a couple of years, unless we do some structuring in the debt service. And we could probably do that. We could probably explain to the ratings agencies that we need to get some projects done, but 70 million is probably about the right number. So just kind of wrapping up, I'd say 70 million probably feels like a good number in there in terms of that give or take number. One thing I want to point out is, that basically would constrain the county from issuing other debt after about 2025, when we get the next drop down. So at least, at least another five, six years out. Any financing, lease transaction through the PPA is going to count against our debt. And I didn't mention this earlier, but we had conversations, my partners did, in the case of Bristol, with the rating agencies, and they, the rating agencies confirmed it would count against the debt from a credit standpoint. So that's important to know. Again, we're not opposed to working through the PPA process. We've been involved in it in other places as well as here before. But I myself have not seen where a financing done by the private side would be better than the local government issuing the debt on their own. So I think at the end of the day, county ought to take the financing itself and handle that on its own, and let us handle it the way we normally do. Mr. Chairman, happy to answer questions.
I'll start off with Supervisor Kane.
So you're, you're saying if we do what the schools wants us to do, that's still going to count against our rating?
If, I understand the number is north of 100 million, then that's going to put us back above that 12% guideline. We didn't run that number, so I don't know exactly what the percentage is.
Right.
But we basically told the rating agencies back in 2012, when we issued the debt, that we didn't plan to go above our rate, our guideline again, unless there's another emergency.
Sure. I don't hear any emergency. I know some of them saying it won't count against it, and some of them saying that we, what's your view of it?
We have a, like, we actually, and I think that maybe some of, where maybe there was some, I'll just say misinformation. We wrote a memo after talking to the rating agencies by conference call, in this case of the Bristol, and they confirmed that if the PPA went forward and they issued the debt away from the city, it would count against their ratios. And, and it makes sense because it's going, it's the constituents at the end of the day who are paying this. And that's part of the measure is, it's just like if we go out, if you were to go out and buy a new home, they're going to look at your income level and figure out how much of your income is going toward paying the mortgage. But that's the same concept here, is how much of your budget, your debt service, is going toward your annual budget, because your income versus your budget. And so you're still paying it, whether you issued it or not. And so the rating agency said, no, we would count that against you.
I do want to thank you and our staff for getting us where we're at today. Thank you.
Supervisor Fidzikowski.
I'm trying to understand the way the PPEA was used last time versus what is being proposed this time. Is it the same, or was it used differently back then?
I'm, I'm going to look to county administrator a little bit because I don't know all the details of what is being proposed here. But I think what happened, correct me if I'm wrong, from 2012 was they did the procurement side of who's going to build the projects through the PPA, and we did the debt.
That's correct.
Off of, on our, you know, they basically.
They used the PPA process for our procurement side to determine, through negotiation, to determine which firm to do the construction. But they still use the county as the, in the traditional method of financing the project.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs.
No, I think you answered my question because I just wanted a straight answer from, you know, our financial planners as to what would happen with the, the rating agencies. And it looks like you've given us a straight answer.
Yeah, and so we're actually in front of them and ask for an official. There's no guarantees either way, but it does put us, let me put it this way, that chart, they had the four, I kind of think of it as a school of four legs. And if we're going to now weaken what they're already saying is weak, that one leg, then we're already leaning a little bit. And so that makes us, the other three legs, we've got to be very careful that we keep those other legs strong, or we're going to fall over.
Thank you.
Supervisor Boe.
I have a couple of questions. Earlier, you mentioned that we were knocking on the door of the highest credit rating. Are we really?
Yes, ma'am.
And so what would it take us to get there?
Well, we just got there, to, we just got to the AA+. So I can tell you from experience, they're not going to turn around and give you one the next year.
Yeah.
It takes a little bit more time at continuing to operate at a very high level, which we are. They want to see the economy continue to do well. Tech, obviously, is a huge engine for you in that regard, and things continue. I know there was some news not that long ago, I think a big announcement, some new jobs, 500 new jobs. I think that's huge for a locality of this size, huge, this day and time, too. Even though the U.S. economy is doing well, it could always do better. So those are the type of things that, that we want to put in front of the rating agencies, you know, the next time we're talking to them, to keep pushing forward. And I, I can't always, in front of a locality, say, yes, you have the ability to get to AAA. That's not always true. But I do know, because I've had discussions offline with the agencies, that it is not out of the cards for this county.
So if we look at your chart that had the timeline, like page 17, 18, and let's say that, you know, that we can have it issued at 4% if I'm speaking properly here.
Yes.
And this fiscal year, we could spend $16 million on school buildings, and next year, another million, and in 2021, another 12. Well, it takes three years to build a new high school or something like that, so the payments or the debt issuance can be at those rates. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. And I think one of the things that, not getting into too many nuances tonight, but I think we can probably set up some structure where we can issue more than 16 million now, if we need to. And again, I don't know how far along schools are planned, so maybe it takes a year to get there. But I think we can probably get to a $70 million number.
Now?
Now.
Not 75, not 80, not?
Probably not.
So, so let's say that we did issue 70 million in the next year. Could we achieve a AAA rating anytime soon?
I think it probably makes it more difficult.
That'll set us back, yeah.
Definitely takes, I think it makes it more difficult. Let's make it stretchy.
So if we only issued 50 million, it wouldn't set us back very?
That gives us cushion to do other things.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's, I think that's true, yes.
But it still puts us back away from potentially getting a AAA rating?
Hard to say.
Okay.
Definitely makes it harder. If you put it, if we're going to go right up against our 12% number, it definitely, I mean, you already saw we're at an above average, and that's where we are now.
Mm-hmm.
So it just means that we've got to be that much stronger everywhere else.
Well, and if I can add to that, too, one of the, one of the concerns, I think, it's absolutely a goal to see us continue to move towards that AAA level. But the other thing we want to be very cautious about is knowing the discussions we had with the rating agencies a couple of years ago, when we had the situation with Blacksburg High School, is we don't want to be back in front of them in the next couple of years, pushing the limit, if you will, again, because then not only are you going to extend the time you'd ever take to get to AAA, then they start looking at your AA+ going, well, you know, you said you weren't going to have to do this again, and now you're having to do it again.
And then you said later, unless there's an emergency. Well, it's, like you said, we don't have a broken-down school, but we do have schools that are busting, right? And that's really why they're coming to us. And to some people, that is an emergency.
Emergency, I understand, right.
So is it an emergency, or isn't it an emergency, from the credit ratings perspective?
It's going to be, it would be hard for them to answer that without, you know.
Well, you're our, you're our professional, so what, what is that?
It'd be hard for me to answer that because I've not seen the schools, I don't know the numbers, you know what I mean?
Well, let's, yeah, let's say that you, you know, we bring you to the two elementary schools and the Christiansburg High School, among any of our other schools. We've got trailers. We've got trailers, I don't know what busting at the seams means unless you're saying, well, we're in trailers, so we've already busted the seams. Is that, from your perspective, an emergency?
I guess it's hard for me to answer that because I don't know the price tag of, let's say, building a wing on a school to get rid of those learning challenges, right?
Okay. And again, on pages 17 and 18, if you said 70 million was the right number, or, you know, we all decided that 70 million was the right number, it would be issued at the 4% because we would, you would be issuing it right now versus you wouldn't be doing it in stages where sometime in the future, it would be 5% because the economy just made it that way.
I think that would probably be the best thing to do. Now, and I'll say, I started to say this earlier, right? Who knows where rates are going to go, but I don't think rates are going to get away from us. So I don't feel an urgency to say, let's get moving if we're going to do something, let's go do it now. Short-term rates may go up, Fed's going to raise rates probably in two days. But the market's got that built in. The real question is what's going to happen next year? And from a 10, 15, 20-year interest rate perspective, there's so much going on in Europe and China right now from a economy's not doing very well. I don't think we're going to see our rates jump anytime soon. So from that perspective, I think we have time. I think the one takeaway from all of this is that, again, I don't, you know, what are the other needs out there outside of schools that make prop up or come out of nowhere in the way the capacity is going?
But you said that our financial performance was very good, and so did the credit rating agencies. And that, from my interpretation, just asking for affirmative affirmation is, is it because we have so, so much money in reserves for this project and that project and this project? Is that part of?
It's a little bit of, it's a little bit of everything. So the economy's been doing great, and we tell the story, part of the story is talk about the different industries and how things are going. Part of it is your fund balance in the general fund, which is that policy.
Okay, it's not specific.
And part of it is, it's not specifically going...
Just only, yeah, okay.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
I got you.
Yep, it's a little bit of everything. Because there are a lot of different pieces that go into the rating.
And then my last question is, the differences between the debt as a percentage of assessed value and debt as a percentage of expense expenditures. You highlighted our guidelines or policies, but do other counties have other policies that allow them to go above 12 or above three or four that it doesn't hurt them? That's, are those just...
So I don't have any counties that I know of that we work with that are above 12%. There are some smaller cities that might do 15% in certain cases, but most, or towns, most, I know all my counties are 10% or 12%.
Okay.
Some of the northern Virginia counties, like Loudoun County, is at 10. They're, they're at eight, nine, and they're bumping up because they're building schools every year, and they're AAA. So, but not above 12.
And as a follow-up, can you, if we brought that down to 11 and, you know, whatever, would that mean that we would get to a higher, better credit rating faster if we had a different policy?
I'm not sure that it would necessarily tip, scale, right? That one thing.
Thank you very much. It's very helpful.
Supervisor Shepard.
I have a question and may go to staff more than you. On page 13, your graph shows debt as a percentage of the assessed value. In 2009, 10, and 11, it stayed pretty flat at 2%. But your graph shows it going all the way down to less than a half percent at 2028. What's, what was there in 2009 that kept it from going down? We didn't, did we have debt on the schools then?
We had some school debt for the middle schools, and then we had debt that was issued for the courthouse and public safety building, if I remember correctly, 77 million.
Right. Okay, yeah, that makes sense. It just, I looked at that and I thought, well, that's all well and good. It shows it going down to half a percent at 2028, but it never had before.
No.
So, okay.
That was, that was middle schools and courthouse debt, if I remember correctly.
I've got a few. At least some of the proposals for the schools was 110 million dollars. Okay. So north of that. And let's say that we have two elementary schools in Montgomery County. We were talking about emergencies. Prices work is not at capacity. And we've got another school down in, in the other Eastmont, it's not a capacity elementary school. So when we're talking about emergencies and we have capacity in our system, but we're not redistributing the students, is that going to affect whether that's an emergency or not?
I think it could. And one of the charts that we will show the agencies is a listing of the schools, but their institutional capacity is supposed to be in what the current enrollment is. And they see that and say, well, I see where you're busting here. And I realize there's, it's tough for people because they have to change schools, things like that. But I know Loudoun County does it every year.
Redistricts every year?
They have to because they grow so fast.
Okay, all right. That must be an interesting process. As far as using 110 million, and we're looking, we're talking about 70 million, but in roughly 2023, is I'm hearing that number.
Yeah. With some structuring. And so what we'll do, so if you think about the way we normally do our bond issues, we're doing level payments over 20 years. If we do that, there's, we're going to, if we do 70 million right now, that's immediately looking at this chart here in the 2020, basically it's going to spike up, right? There's not a lot of room in 2020, but you see it drop down a little bit more in 2021. So if we did, we call it capitalizing interest. If we borrow a little bit to pay interest, we can get our number to where it doesn't pop up above. And then in 2021, we can do interest only. So what we're doing, instead of paying principal every year, we're going to be paying 17, or 16 years of principal over 20 years to make it fit and keep our churn under 12%. That's in order, that's in order to get to that 70 million today rather than wait and do 16, one, break the other number short.
As far as, and you had mentioned 20 years, when you start talking about 30 years and 40 years, okay, is it fair to say whoever is loaning that money is licking their chops and saying, thank you very much for extending it another 10 or 20 years? Because of the additional revenue on the interest?
You know, the additional revenue on interest is really over time more than it is in one year.
Right.
Because what happens is by stringing out the principal, you end up with less payments. The interest doesn't change a lot, it's the amount of principal you're paying.
Right.
So they're not really getting any more interest, they're getting it for a longer period of time, assuming you don't refinance and pay it off, or pay it off early. And honestly, the only person that I'm actually working with West Warren County right now, and they're about to issue 40 million dollars, plus or minus, for a high school. It's the first time that anybody's built a high school in West Warren County in many, many years, and probably won't do it in anybody's, you know, at least in young folks' lifetime, but in a long time. So they're replacing their high school, and they're doing it through rural development, who's one of the few people that issue for 40 years.
Okay.
I've never done one of those. This is the first time I've ever done a school for 40 years. I've done some close to 30 a couple of times, but most, I'd say 95% of what we've done, at least in my career, have been 20 years for sure.
And so if I'm recapping it, as far as it will be considered debt, if we go out and get 110 million dollars, and we can call it a lease, we can call it whatever, but Wall Street is going to say that is debt.
It is. And my understanding was the way that Bristol's PPA was, by the way, I don't know if you guys realize, but City Council voted it down. But the way it was structured was the schools were going to take money out of their own budget and pay the debt service. It wasn't going to come out of the general fund of the city. But even then, the rating agency said it's going to count as debt.
And there's been some discussion of that being structured this way here as well, that it would not be the county's responsibility, it would be the schools. But it doesn't, when it's all put into the financials.
Think about it, these numbers that we're talking about here, I have to try to get into the details, but if you look at the bottom down there in the footnotes, the expenditures are general fund expenditures plus school operating expenditures. So that's the, your budget and their budget. We net out, of course, the transfer that you're sending to them. So it's your two budgets together, because most of this debt is theirs. And so the rating agencies are looking at that going, what other obligations do you have?
Okay. And as far as the impact on our bond ratings, obviously it's going to have, it would have some impact because when we're, promise them, hey, look, we had an emergency, we had a school collapse, we are in trouble, we need money to fix the school. And then we come back and say, hey, look, we have another emergency, we've got some mobile units.
Yeah, it's a difficult thing. I think, I think that's a tough argument to make.
All right. Thank you very much. Did that spur any other additional questions?
Supervisor Bone.
So if you can stretch out and only pay interest payments for, you know, a couple of years, why don't we do it for a couple of years longer and borrow 110 million?
There's a, so one of the things that we looked at earlier, it's not a policy, but we looked at that payout ratio. So we want to keep an eye on that. And we haven't, I honestly have not done the calculations to see what that would do to, if we were to do what the bond, let's say, 70 million now. But we want to be mindful of that number because if we get that number too low, we're basically not paying our principal off in a somewhat timely manner. And while that sounds great now to go ahead and get these projects done, what that's going to do is it's going to tie your hands for even a longer period of time down the road. And there's going to be other projects that are going to need, at some point, there's going to be fire stations, there's going to be, this building's going to need some maintenance, there's going to be other things that you may not have the cash for what to do, that are going to need to be borrowed.
So let's say that we do borrow 70 billion, and then someone, another catastrophe happens and a building's roof collapses. Is that going to have the credit rating agencies downgrade us because we're playing with the limit and then?
That's a hard one. If it's an emergency again, it's hard to say.
Okay.
You know, that, I think that might be at their whim at that point, taking into account all the things that are going on.
Thank you.
In my 26 years, this is, this is actually the only time one of my clients has actually gone through their policy, and only time we've ever had an emergency like this. So this has definitely been a special circumstance.
Thank you.
And I understand the plight of the schools, that, you know, I do understand they've got needs and you guys are growing. And so we're trying to be helpful as best we can, but at the same time, I have to answer you guys.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the board, we have safe travels to you and happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you too.
Thank you, Courtney. Don't ask your interviewee a lot of questions all the way back up the road.
He should be asking me the questions.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is under presentation, Montgomery County's annual report.
I think Jennifer has a little something for us this evening.
All right. Well, we have an annual report to share with you. Just so you know, it's from July 2017 through June 2018. So we're a little bit later this year in showing it to you, but we had so much going on, we had to keep bumping this project a little bit. And finally, we were able to find some time and make it happen and pull it together. And I want to point out a few quick things before I share the report with you. First, we have a new format this year. We decided that it's great to hear from public information, but we thought it'd be even better if you could hear from all of the different departments. So we asked each department to give us a representative, and Josh ran around like crazy and filmed everybody he could from A to V, photo registrar. And so many things were done in this past year that we just couldn't cram it all into the report, the actual video report. It is a little bit longer than it has been in the past, but we didn't want to leave out all the great highlights. So in addition to the video, we also created an online report with supplemental information and multimedia. So there'll be links to news stories and picture slideshows and videos, and any type of supplemental information will be in that online report. And we, it was tough to cut and edit things out of the video report, so that was our consolation prize, so to speak, to the, to the different departments, that the rest of the story will be online, we promised. So that's what we did. And let's see. Well, the biggest thing I want to say though is that this would not have happened without Josh and Dearly. And I want to say, last year I came into this and I didn't experience everything that we had to report on. I was so new, I hadn't had that opportunity. And ever since I first interviewed with the county, what was it, the fall of 2016, I think, I was so impressed by how innovative the county is and how talented the folks who work here are. And I wanted to be a part of this so bad, and I was so thankful that I was invited to be a part of this team. And now that I've been able to be a part of the full year and actually be a part of all the things that we're reporting on, it's very exciting to see and to talk to all the different departments and to hear firsthand their excitement and to see all the things that they've accomplished and to be a part of the team and to be able to have been in the weeds with everybody while we did that. So again, just would not be possible without Josh and Dearly working very hard to make this happen. Josh took the lead on the video report that you're going to see, and then I will show you really quickly before I push play, a couple of elements of the online report so you can just see it, and you can look at it later, we'll make sure you have a copy or the link to it. But the talent here is crazy, and I'm just so thankful. And it is my pleasure to be a part of the public information team and to work every day with Josh and Dearly because it, the things that they come up with, we're very, very blessed as a county to have them as part of our team. So let me show you real quick the online report, just a couple of quick elements. So when you first log on, this is what it will look like. And you can toggle around, here at the bottom will be arrows, so you can go around and check out all the report, all the different elements. We did put an overview and your picture. But then if you just want to jump to different pages, you can. So we'll go to one that's been in the news a lot here, the Animal Care and Adoption Center. I'll show you real quick an example of a photo slideshow, so you can look within. And whenever there are links to more, you can click on that and see the different news stories and videos and whatnot. So it's not working right now, but it will when you click on it, I promise. Okay. I'll show you the video, and I'm going to sit down and get it all the way and let you enjoy it.
Hello, I'm Craig Meadows, county administrator for Montgomery County, and I'd like to welcome you to the 2018 Montgomery County Annual Report. In January 2018, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors unanimously re-elected Christopher Tuck, District B, as chair, and elected April DeMottz, District G, as the vice chair. We also welcomed Supervisor Sarah Bone as District A representative and Steve Fidjikowski as District C representative. In September of 2017, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors conveyed 9.25 acres of land, commonly referred to as the meadow, to the town of Blacksburg for recreational use and dedicated it to longtime Montgomery County Border Supervisor member Annette Perkins, District A. In October of 2017, the board unveiled concept plans for expanding the Eastern Montgomery Recreation Complex to include new ball fields, a multipurpose field, and a dedicated parking area. When the construction is complete, Creed Field will be dedicated in honor of Supervisor Gary Creed's longtime service to District C. And after passing the fiscal year 2019 budget of 189.6 million dollars, a video explaining the budget process was published. To view the video online, visit www.mottva.com/budget.
Hi, I'm Eileen Mahan, Director of the Animal Care and Adoption Center. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about what we've accomplished for the animals and citizens of Montgomery County this year. In 2017, more than 15,700 community members visited the facility and over 1,600 people signed up to volunteer at the ACAC. With the help of our community and wonderful collaborative events like the Free Adoption Weekend, the Montgomery County Animal Care and Adoption Center attained a 96% live release rate in 2017. And to celebrate the success over the past year... And to celebrate the success over the past year, as well as to thank the community who's been so supportive, the Animal Care and Adoption Center hosted a one-year anniversary celebration and open house in May.
Hello, my name is Brian Hamilton. I'm Economic Development Director from Montgomery County, Virginia, and I'm here to detail some of the events that occurred over the past year. In November of 2017, the Montgomery County Economic Development Authority, working with the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, purchased 124 acres of property adjacent to the county's Falling Branch Corporate Park at a cost of $2.5 million to create Falling Branch Base Two. The county has applied for a grant to complete all necessary engineering plans to grade the site for Falling Branch Base Two. And on the building, the Economic Development Authority, originally built for Torque Robotics and Blacksburg Industrial Park, the company is constructing a 15,000-square-foot expansion to make room for new research and development and 80 new employees.
Hello, I'm Angie Hill, Director of Finance for Montgomery County, and I'd like to share with you two of our accomplishments from the year. Standard and Poor's Rating Services raised the county's bond rating from AA to AA+ based on our sound operating performance and our stable financial outlook. We also received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for the 31st consecutive year.
Hi, my name is Scott Woodrum, Director of Environmental Services and County Engineer, and I would like to speak with you about a few things the county has been busy with over the last year. Bruman &amp; Bluman celebrated 35 years of keeping the county beautiful. On April the 28th, 2018, with the assistance of over 100 volunteers, we covered 37 miles and collected over 1,500 pounds of refuse. The dedicated service of staff and volunteers was recognized by the Board of Supervisors on May the 29th. The county remains focused on improving and meeting the MS4 program goals. As part of the public education and outreach component of the program, staff from Environmental Services participated in the Stormwater Education Days with Montgomery County Public Schools. And Montgomery County Building Inspections partnered with the Montgomery County Public Schools to implement the ICC High School Technical Training Program, which helps prepare high school students for a future career path in the building inspection field.
Hi, I'm Clay McCoy, Director of Human Resources for Montgomery County. We would like to share with you some of the activities that we've performed this year. For the county's nearly 500 employees, the HR team partners with 10 individual companies and insurance coverage plans. The result is approximately 4,000 plans managed annually by the HR team. The HR team also hosted nearly a dozen events for employees in 2018, from health fairs and other employee-focused events to blood drives and programs where employees chose to give back to our community in a big way. We partnered with Virginia Blood Services to collect over 100 pints of blood, enough to save 300 lives. At our Share the Love event, employees donated over 1,000 items to area foster children. We also hosted our Season of Giving campaign with employees donating over 900 food pantry items to the Montgomery County Emergency Assistance Program during the holidays. We also conducted numerous employee training sessions on topics that included job-related skills, public services, and both employee and public safety.
Hello, I'm Mandy Hayes, Coordinator of the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program. Thank you for joining us. I'd like to share some of our accomplishments for the year. The Retired and Senior Volunteer Program is celebrating 45 years of service to Montgomery County. According to the data available in the past 25 years of our electronic records, 789 volunteers enrolled and performed 865,658 hours of service to over 138 nonprofit organizations. A recognition celebration was held in May to celebrate this milestone. The RSVP Advisory Council awarded two $1,000 scholarships to Zachary Blevins from Christiansburg High School and Kaylee Grace Jones from Eastern Montgomery High School. And in 2017, 291 RSVP volunteers provided 59,541 hours of service to 71 different nonprofit organizations.
Hi, I'm Phil Martin, Information Technology Director for Montgomery County, and I'd like to share with you a little of how we're remaining innovative here at the county. We initiated an enterprise content management program that will enable county employees to more efficiently manage unstructured information such as documents, forms, and other digital media. We continued our cybersecurity awareness campaign for all employees and provided training in various scenarios. And Montgomery County won the Digital Counties Award for the fifth year in a row, placing fourth nationally for counties with less than 150,000 people.
Hello, I'm Monina Hall, Branch Manager of the Blacksburg Library, and I'd like to share with you some of the things that have been happening at the Montgomery Floyd Regional Libraries. In cooperation with Montgomery County Animal Care and Adoption Center, MFRL introduced Catterday Reading Buddies. School-aided children have the opportunity to read to adoptable cats from the Animal Care and Adoption Center during visits to the library. With an American Dream Grant from the American Library Association and the Dollar General Literacy Foundation, Montgomery Floyd Regional Library created the Family Read Program at the Blacksburg and Meadowbrook Library branches. This program helped parents and children improve their English language skills and work on parenting skills. The library introduced tough subject backpacks, each with books dealing with social or medical issues that may not be easy to explain to young children. And Blacksburg Library's Children's Books Section was updated with new shelving, $7,000 in new material due to library patrons' general support, and a new shelving scheme allowing patrons to browse by theme.
Hello, my name is Mitchell Hawke, the Recreation Director for Montgomery County. I'd like to share a couple of highlights of the last year with you. For the regional cleanup event, Renew the New 2017, Montgomery County volunteers removed two and a half tons of trash and miscellaneous debris, including a kitchen sink and 123 tires from the New River and surrounding banks. Dick's Sporting Goods made a large equipment donation to Montgomery County Parks and Recreation for the fourth year in a row. For the ninth year in a row, Sheila Motormile donated $4,500 in equipment and free programs like the Cal Ripken Baseball Clinic. And 10U and 12U softball, one district.
Hi, I'm Emily Gibson, Director of Planning and GIS Services, and I'd like to tell you about a few of the initiatives our department worked on this year. Our department wears many hats and transportation projects kept us busy this year. The Safe Routes to School Grant ended this spring with the construction of a pedestrian trail at Auburn Middle School. We also kicked off Montgomery Matters, an update of the county's long-range planning, and work began right away on the Prices Ford Village Plan Update. Our staff also serves on the NPO Bike Share Advisory Committee and was instrumental in the initiative to launch Rome, our regional bike share program that is a four-way collaboration between the county, both towns, and Virginia Tech.
Hello, I'm Neil Turner, Montgomery County Emergency Services Coordinator, and I'm on the build site of the new Reiner Fire Station. And I'd like to take just a few minutes to tell you some of the things that we do each day to keep Montgomery County safe. Members representing over 1,673 years of combined service, the individuals with more than 35 years of service who volunteer for Christiansburg, Blacksburg, Elliston, Longshot McCoy, Reiner, and Shawsville Fire Departments and Rescue Squads were recognized at the Board of Supervisors meeting. Danny Yopp became the first recipient of the Responder of the Year Award presented by the Blacksburg Rotary Club. The NRV 911 Authority launched a new emergency medical dispatch program, giving dispatchers the training necessary to provide life-saving instruction to callers reporting injuries or incidents prior to EMS arrival on scene. And the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office Lip Sync Challenge video went viral with over 200,000 views, thousands of likes, and almost 6,000 shares.
Hi, I'm Jen Harris, Public Information Director from Montgomery County, and I'm here to share a few of the national, regional, and state accolades the public information team has received over the past year. The Adopt a Shark Week social media campaign received a National Association of Government Communicators Award and a Blue Ridge Chapter of the Public Relations Society of America's Silver Award. Our Crazy for Cats public service announcement received a Blue Ridge Chapter of the Public Relations Society of America's Gold Award and a National Association of Government Communicators Award. For our social media efforts related to the Animal Care and Adoption Center, the National Association of Government Communicators awarded Montgomery County second place nationally. In addition, we received a Virginia Association of Counties Achievement Award. Our Sheriff's Automatic Injury Detection Panel's public service announcement received a Blue Ridge Chapter of the Public Relations Society of America's Silver Award. Our Black Cat Appreciation Day event also received a Blue Ridge Chapter of the Public Relations Society of America's Silver Award. The branding of the Animal Care and Adoption Center received a National Association of Government Communicators Award. In addition, the Virginia Association of Counties also recognized our Catterday Program and the Animal Care and Adoption Center's achievement of their live release rate goal of 96%.
Hello, my name is Tony Dibler, Principal of Christiansburg High School. I'd like to share with you some accomplishments of Montgomery County Public Schools this year. All Montgomery County schools are accredited by the Virginia Department of Education. The Montgomery County School Board added student representatives to the governing body. A representative from each high school serves as a non-voting member on the board and they provide student input and perspective. You can buy a license plate designed by a Montgomery County high school student at the DMV. The plate design eyes on the road on a state competition about distracted driving through the Department of Motor Vehicles. MCPS held the district's first career and military signing day, recognizing students who will enter into careers immediately after graduation with certifications that they earned while in high school. MCPS high schools earned 10 state championships in 2017-18, including wrestling, soccer, golf, and cross-country. And significant progress was made on the athletics renovations at Christiansburg High School during the year.
Hi, I'm Lisa Blakely, Director of the Montgomery County Regional Tourism Office, and I'd like to share a little bit about how we inspire first-time visitors and repeat visitors to come to Montgomery County. This year, we launched the Junior Appalachian Musicians Montgomery County After-School Program in partnership with Great Road on Main, Montgomery Museum, Christiansburg Elementary School, and a handful of adults from throughout the Montgomery County area. They are all passionate about our youth and Virginia's mountain heritage, music, and culture. This program will provide authentic arts, opportunities for visitors and residents in addition to building community and enriching the lives of our youth. Eric the Travel Guy highlighted Montgomery County in his new video travel series, Beyond Your Backyard. You can see it nationally on the PBS TV network. Montgomery County is featured on the AM Hotch Podge Radio Show during a monthly tourism segment. The program is aired Saturday morning and is also available on podcasts. The tourism office blitzed two Virginia State Welcome Centers this year. Travelers are greeted just inside the Virginia-North Carolina border at Lambsburg and at the Welcome Center in Clearbrook. And the next time you're flying into the Roanoke-Blacksburg Regional Airport, look for our destination signage prominently located on baggage carousel number two. This beautifully designed sign will welcome our travelers through May of 2019 and perhaps beyond.
Hello, I'm Rebecca Collins, Assistant Registrar from Montgomery County, and I'd like to tell you a little bit more about the Registrar's Office's accomplishments over the past year. We're currently preparing for and training the officers of election for the upcoming June 12th dual primary election for two seats, US House of Representatives and US Senate. Upon approval from Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, Voting Precinct D1 was relocated from the Christiansburg Armory to the Victory Restoration Church effective 2018, and we began the process of scanning all paper files into electronic format to better serve the public's needs.
If you have any further questions about the county, feel free to visit our website at www.mottva.com. I want to thank you for joining us for the Montgomery County 2018 Annual Report.
Jennifer and her staff spent tons of time, as she said, Josh and Durley stressed and stressed and stressed, but I think they came up with a very good product and I hope you guys feel likewise. Thank you, Jen. Wow, that was, that's a fantastic presentation. I think it shows off a lot of, as you described, talent, county employees, and I think about all of Josh and Tom just recording each one of those segments and then editing. I greatly appreciate his efforts as well. Moving on, the next item is public hearings and specifically this, which was, let's see, public hearing, I'm just having a trouble pulling, there we go. An ordinance amending Chapter 2 entitled Administration of the Code of the County, of Montgomery County, Virginia by adding Section 2.36 imposing a $50 return check fee for utter, the uttering, publishing, or passing of any check, draft, or order for payment of taxes or any other sum due which is subsequently returned for insufficient funds or because there was no account or the account has been closed or because such check, draft, or order was returned because of a non, or because of a stop payment order placed in bad faith on the check. And Marty, do you want to say anything in regards to this? I don't, no one has signed up. I don't know that anybody in the back would like to comment about, but you're welcome. You can state your name and address and you have five minutes. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll go ahead and close that public hearing. And then the next item up is public address. There are no one signed up. Actually, there is one individual signed up, but it doesn't appear that he is present. But you don't have to be signed up if anyone would like to address the board. You can address us about any subject. Please state your name and address and you'd have five minutes. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll go ahead and close public address. I don't believe that there's an addendum.
No, sir, there is not.
Is there a motion in regards to items of consent?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Supervisor Bone and a second by Supervisor Biggs. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidjelkowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Is there a motion to go into work session? So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Supervisor Shepherd and a second by Supervisor Biggs. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fidjelkowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ayes.
We're in work sessions. Our first item is reassessment update, and Carol's here to help us with that.
I don't think it's really fair that I should have to follow Jennifer. It's really not fair, but I'm going to give all the disclaimers right up front before we even get started here. What I have to present is very, very brief and it's all the information I have as an update to reassessment. When we get to the end, there'll be some dollar amounts and I want to caution everybody to keep that in perspective because it is only one piece of your total revenue picture and it's where we are at a point in time. There are things that happen with real estate revenue that you have to overlay a collection rate, you need to subtract out land use, there are, there's a process to doing all that, and that's what you'll hear in January when Mark McGruder's back up here telling you how much money is available to spend in this upcoming budget season. So when you see the dollar amounts and you see what's happening, just remember it's a point in time and we're not finished yet. It's not the end, it's the beginning, okay? And with that said... I didn't want to hand it out first because I knew everybody split it to the back, you know.
I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Probably should just start at the back to begin with because that's where you're going to start.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, the process itself and where we, where we are. The independent contractors that we hired to do reassessment... The independent contractors that we hired to do reassessment, the end, sort of the end of their process is the informal appeals and hearings that they do. It is not a formal process, but it's a process they do for us. Those ended, and the notices of either change or no change, if you appealed something, should have been sent out December the 7th. So everyone who made an appeal should have a notice regarding what that outcome of that appeal. The next piece of the process is the formal process, and that's the Board of Equalization. They, if people are not happy about what happened with their first level of appeal, they do not come to the Board of Supervisors, they go to the Board of Equalization. And here's the information about where to call or write if they would like to be heard by the Board of Equalization. The deadline to request a hearing before the Board of Equalization is January the Again, the process can continue after the Board of Equalization does the disposition of any appeals. The final level of appeal is with the Circuit Court, and the burden's on the property owner to show whether, whether or not the assessment was valid or why they believe it's invalid, but the burden of proof is on the property owner. A little bit about the number of appeals that occurred. Thirty-nine were actually mailed letters of appeal. There were 312 face-to-face interviews and 269 online appeals for a total of 620. Now, these are actually individual appeals, but people appeal more than one parcel. You know, some developers will come in and they'll appeal every parcel that they own. And so the total number of parcels appealed was 1,242. The outcome of that, the end result was 77% of those did have a change in value and 23% did not. That change could either be an increase or a decrease. I don't know which occurred or what the proportion is, but it could have been either one. Most likely, it was a reduction. And here's what everybody's been waiting for, I'm sure. Again, I've got notes and disclaimers all over the place to keep in mind that this is not the end result, but it's something you can think about in terms of range as to the revenue-neutral rate at this point before the Board of Equalization is 83 cents. One cent of the value you get to retain, if you lower it to 83 cents, then the 7% is factored into lowering that rate. There's an 8% increase in value, and that equals, asterisk and note again, don't forget the footnote, that its 89 cents would generate roughly 5.6 million. Again, you've got to have a collection rate, you've got to subtract off land use, you've got to put some parameters around it, which you will hear in the total revenue picture in January, but that's the upper end of the range projected where we are now. If the rate is lowered back to 83 cents, you get to keep the 1%, you roughly have 700,000. Again, that's all the information I have to present. Merry Christmas.
Wait a minute, we gotta check.
I don't have any more.
I understand. There might be a few questions. I'll start off with Supervisor Fidzikowski. Do you have any questions, Carol?
No, I think it's pretty short and sweet.
Short and sweet, that was it. Again, it's not fair I have to follow Jennifer.
Supervisor Biggs?
We can do a video, we can make a video with this.
Yeah. Short and sweet.
No, I don't have any questions, but thanks for the information.
Supervisor Bone?
Just to make sure that I'm clear, on the last page there, you say it does not include any new construction.
It does not.
Period. Since four years ago. Since four years ago.
No, in the past one year.
One year.
Growth for the past year.
So any new construction that was completed in the last year?
That's correct, since January 8th.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you so much. Great job.
Supervisor Shepherd?
Just one, because I don't understand. So 1% of the value can be retained. Where does that 1% come from? Like, if you go back to 83, 83 cents, where's that 1%?
The 1% is 1% of the new assessed value. You can retain that, what that would equate to in terms of dollars.
So it wouldn't end up being 83 cents, it'd be 83 and a half or 84? Is that what you're saying? I just wondered where that 1% is coming from.
You, it could be, 1% comes off the assessed value. So you have the new assessed value, you have the value associated with 1% that you subtract, because what you have to come to is the same amount of revenue that you had prior to doing your reassessment. And the idea is that you get to keep 1% because that should pay for your reassessment cost over four years.
Yeah, that's, I was going to add that, that the 700,000 revenue-neutral would be, allows you to pay for the expense of reassessment.
That's all. Supervisor King?
I got a lot of questions. You're talking 83 cents. If it all works out, we can lower the tax rate to 83 cents, is that what you're saying? And have the same?
That would be your revenue-neutral rate. If you were considering that you were not going to raise taxes at all, you were going to roll the rate back, you would roll it back to the revenue-neutral rate, which right now would be 83 cents. If the Board of Equalization lowers value enough, it could make it 84 cents, but right now, it would be down to 83 cents.
If they do that, can we charge them a difference?
I think you're not.
Thank you very much.
So if I'm coming away from this, I'm expecting the number to probably go down a little bit because of the Board of Equalization. There's going to be appeals to the board, they're going to make some rulings, they're going to rule against us some of the time, and so the number's probably going to go down from here. Obviously, I guess I could appeal it and say, I want my taxes more, my assessed value to go up.
Well, strangely enough, people have done that.
I understand.
And the other piece that's in there, I mean, it'll likely go down because of appeals, but if you've rode around the county in the last year, there's a lot of new construction going on too, so that'll be an interesting factor to see.
If the value goes down, it could actually make the neutral rate higher.
Okay. And then, part of it is, we do not have, if it was within 1%, you don't have to advertise it as a tax increase. Correct. But if we leave the rate, even though we're leaving the rate at 89 cents, we would be required to advertise it as a tax increase.
Yes, you would.
Even though we're keeping the rate the exact same.
Yes, you would.
I just wanted to clarify that.
If those numbers held, they, if the 83 cent held, and if we were to advertise a budget at 89 cents, that's in effect a 6 cent tax increase.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
That's all the questions.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. See, that wasn't that bad?
No, not at all.
And the next item on the work session, unless somebody had any other questions, was, and this was brought up, Supervisor Shepherd wanted this, and some questions answered in regards to the Sojourn Center, and I guess these questions are really directed towards Marty and the real estate tax exemption, and if it could be retroactive.
Right. No. That's the short answer, but under state law, they give you the authority to do this process about granting tax exemption for, for certain nonprofit properties that are used, you know, within the religious, charitable, patriotic, historical, benevolent, public park, cultural purposes. But nowhere in that statute does it give you the authority to retroactively exempt those taxes. Also, you're required to make certain findings before you can reach the tax-exempt decision, and those findings, they can't go back retroactively either. And also, if you think about it, the, your policy is set up where the taxes become exempt the following January, and then the ordinance that you adopt also sets it that way too, so you would not have the authority to do it without having to go through the process if you had the authority from the state to do it, if that makes sense. So the answer is no, and Merry Christmas.
Don't kill the messenger.
Do you know this one, back in that 83 or 89 cents?
Supervisor Shepherd, does that answer the questions that your constituents had?
Yeah, she just sent me an email wanting to know if we could do a one-time appropriation of the, enough money to pay her taxes for the last year, this past year. They've already been paid, just to reimburse her. And I told her I'd bring it up and I'd ask, and I'm bringing it up and I'm asking, so.
Thank you very much.
What's that?
Nothing.
Well, the next item on work session is school resource officers, and it's, yes. And I understand that the sheriff is here to give us an update. Sheriff Parton?
Just a little tiny piece.
Just a little tiny piece?
Just to call the experts.
All right, bring the experts, and I know that Supervisor Fidzikowski may be able to also provide some insight.
Mr. Meadows, members of the board, thanks for having us. I'm only going to say a couple of words, and we're trying to keep this short so you all can fire our way, since you did give us this position this year. So obviously, the hope is that you will extend that, and later on, we might talk about Easter in Montgomery, since it's out there on kind of an island by itself as well. And nothing to do with that, but the lip sync did go viral without the emergency services coordinator in it, believe it or not. And had it not been for Jennifer and Durley and Josh, never would have happened. They chased us all over the county, they, they are just super, can't, can't thank them enough. That was a lot of fun. And we attempted to shove the county off, and that was noticed by many other sheriff's offices, instead of focusing on one or two people. So, and all of that was thanks to them. So the SRO at Bellevue and Prices Fork has, by all reports that I've received, just been tremendous, and I think that's evident with our two distinguished guests, the principals from both schools. They're here to speak a little bit to you and answer any questions. And the star herself, Deputy Carol, who was given that mission last summer, when you all approved the position for a year, and the pressure was put on her, make a break. So she's got a few things she wants to tell you, and basically, all I can tell you is, between her and Lieutenant Hollinsworth, you should be able to retrieve any answers you'd like. And most of this is thanks to Supervisor Bone, who asked us to come, so.
Deputy Carol?
Good evening. So most people see me, and they're like, oh, there's another deputy, she arrests people, writes tickets, things like that. But that's not what the students at Bellevue and Prices Fork see. They see their friend that greets them every morning at Car Riders, that holds them if they're having a bad morning, that reads a book. I taught there last year at Prices Fork while also working night shift. It was rough, and I didn't really get to meet my kids much. I saw them for about 30 minutes a day, once a week, for 10 weeks. I barely got to know their names. This year, I get to know who they are. I get to know about their little siblings, if they're being bullied, if they see other people being bullied, and the issues that they're having in school, and I get to help them with it. I have some kids that come up to me, and they're like, hey, I don't know how to do multiplication. Okay, let's sit down and work through it. I'm not a teacher by any means, but I'm there for them, and no matter what situation they have. I had a kindergartner this year, at the very beginning of the year, he slammed doors, he cursed his teacher, and he threw chairs. He made it to the point where the rest of the class wasn't safe being in the room. With the teachers, the counselors, the principals, we worked with them. I would walk by the room, and his teacher would say, hey, Deputy Carol, he's having a good day. And so I'd pull him out, and I'd greet with him. So I found out recently, this kid only knew cops as the people who arrested mom. Now he looks at me and says, hey, I want to be a police officer when I grow up. Can you tell me about the stuff that you're wearing? What is all this? What's this on your patch? Which badge are you wearing? So, I mean, I've really made a relationship, and it's not just with him, it's with all kids. We had a lockdown drill, and a fourth grader came out and said, I wasn't worried if it was real or just a drill. I knew you were here, and I knew I felt safe. And these are relationships that I hope to continue to build, because our kids need that.
My name is Lori Comer, and I am principal at Bellevue Elementary. I am new to Montgomery County. I just was hired in July. I retired from the state of West Virginia, I've been a principal there for a long time, and I retired and came to the Virginia side to work. I've been very, very impressed with Montgomery County. I'm impressed with the state of Virginia, and I've been very pleased to be at Bellevue. I can't tell you how thrilled I was to find out that I had a resource officer at my school. I came from a AAA high school in West Virginia with no resource officer, with 1,100 kids, no resource officer. I will tell you, as a principal there, I lobbied to get resource officers. After I left, they got a resource officer. But I can tell you, the six months I have been at Bellevue, and the five months that I've worked with Deputy Carol, it's true, she has formed a relationship with these children, and I can say that her presence within the building, the parents respect her, the teachers respect her, the staff respects her. I can say that we feel safe with her there, and I think when our parents drive away in the morning, or when they put their children on the bus in the morning, they feel like their child is protected and that they're safe, and that's a true investment in this county, is to protect our children. So any consideration you could give to that would be greatly appreciated.
Good evening, I'm Kelly Rourke, I'm the principal at Prices Fork. I would just echo everything that Dr. Comer has said, and just having Deputy Carol's presence at our school has been wonderful. I would say to you, if you were to come to Prices Fork or Bellevue, you're not going to find her sitting in an office. She's out and about in our school, and especially in those busy areas in times like lunch. She's in our cafeteria, and that's what parents and guests like to see when they come in the building, they want to see, where's the resource officer? And she's present, you don't have to go hunt for her. She's in the gym playing basketball, or reading, or, or she is at lunch, or, you know, that front office area where folks are, and they like that. It gives them peace of mind as they come on and off our campus. And one of the things that, you know, Dr. Comer and I have talked about with Lieutenant Hollinsworth and his staff is, it is okay for now to share that position, but it would certainly be nice to have our own at, at each of these buildings, and that's something that I know you all are, have shown your commitment to and are considering, and so that's why we wanted to be here tonight, because it is, it's important, and we have to think about those things now, and drills and safety, and it's nice to know who that face is for your school and who you can call. And I would just, again, thank you for that, and also thank the sheriff's office and you all as well for supporting all of our officers who come in and out of our schools all day long, many of them come and visit, help us with safety checks, things like that, and that's important, that they have the time in their schedules to do both their duties for the sheriff's office, but also supporting school safety, so, thank you.
Thank y'all. Supervisor Biggs, do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
Well, first of all, thank you for the information, and Deputy Carol, what you stated tonight is what I've been trying to say, but you just stated it in concise terms about what it means to be in a school and have the relationship with the kids. And you also stated something that was really important to me about the child that said to you when they were having a safety drill, that they were not afraid because they knew you were there and they felt safe. And I'm an advocate for putting a school resource officer at every elementary school, period. And the reason I feel so strongly about it is basically what was stated here, but then if something were to happen, and you were at Bellevue, and something happened at Prices Fork, it takes time to get from Bellevue to Prices Fork, and it takes time to get from Prices Fork to Bellevue, and I keep trying to make that... to get from Prices Fork to Bellevue. And I keep trying to make that point. And I know we have limited resources, so I'm very supportive of whatever we can do to get an officer in every single elementary school. And I want to thank you for what you have done. And I want to thank the principals for their viewpoint of how this goes on. And the only question I have is for Hank. Hank, if you have a school resource officer at every school, and they don't have to go between schools, would they have to have their own car, I mean, have to have a sheriff's car still?
Yes, all the SROs have cars. But what we do is, is they're all in very high mileage vehicles that have been handed down.
Okay, gotcha.
They're very safe vehicles, but they're high mileage. They've already been through two or three lives.
Okay. And so, if you had an emergency in the county, do these resource officers stay in the schools, or would they have to go out?
Yes.
They would have to leave the school?
No.
They would stay in the school?
The only way I can ever foresee that happening is, for some reason, we had two emergencies at one time.
Yeah.
And the road or supervisors in the building were taking care of one emergency, and something happened closer to where an SRO might be.
Okay.
And they would only be there long enough until they would be relieved.
Okay.
So, when they're assigned to schools, they're supposed to be at the school.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bone?
Thank you all for coming. I think it was very informative. It's hard to understand what it's like in the schools when you don't have kids in the schools anymore, and let alone how juggling two schools might be, because I don't believe there's any other officer that's really formally juggling schools. Is that true?
Correct. We are staffed middle and high schools. So, and if we're talking school strands, the Reiner School strand is probably the best off, because we've got the two SROs right there. And that's basically walking and running distance if they're not at the elementary, and they divide their time off. So, but obviously, the distance between Prices Fork and Bellevue, the distance from town to Bellevue or Prices Fork, and more importantly, the distance from anywhere in this vicinity to Eastmont is time, 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 so important.
In an instance, we had a lockdown drill at Bellevue. And as soon as we went into lockdown, our radio went off that Prices Fork had a fire alarm, a legit fire alarm. And I couldn't really leave. It's very difficult to pick and choose. Now, I was lucky that day that Officer Kobia from Blacksburg and them were close enough to Prices Fork, and it wasn't a true emergency. It was just a chomp. But still, it is. Juggling two is very difficult, because I can't be in two places at once. Wish I could.
Thank you. Sheriff Parton, you mentioned something earlier about Eastmont, Shawsville schools. And I'm not as familiar with that part of the county, but I think one of the schools is not, it's not like Reiner, where all the schools are kind of like closed. Is it the?
So, the middle school is actually in Shawsville proper. Eastmont Elementary and Eastmont High School are at the other end of the Elliston straightaway. And even the distance between the high school and the elementary school is complicated by barriers. There's a large field and fencing. There's really no way, if the high school SRO needed to get to the elementary school in a hurry, that they could. They've got to give them a vehicle and go out to 460 and come back up and come around. So, definitely, Prices Fork, Bellevue, and Eastmont are the problem areas right now.
Could you talk a little bit about SSOs versus SROs? I mean, specifically, the differences between?
Very briefly, not to keep you all, we've already been down that road. So, SSOs would be employed, it's my understanding, by the school system. And that is per DCJS, Department of Criminal Justice Services Regulation. The school system, to my knowledge, is not going to be very ready to do that. So, if that language were changed, and I have talked to Senator Carrico and a few delegates about that language being changed, if it were changed, and those personnel could work for the sheriff, I would more than happily take them on. And then you're talking probably a part-time individual who would work under 40 hours a week, less than $1,500 dollars a year, and with 180 school days, eight-hour days, a school drop or a bus drop-off, bus pickup, that could be accomplished at part-time money.
So, as of right now, they could not report to you? They wouldn't be reporting to your organization at all?
And under the original proposal, I was, you know, very ready, or I could take those folks on, with the firearms, the training qualifications, whatever needed to happen. But the school system's not ready for that.
Because they don't have law enforcement skills?
The school system, no. Basically, the school system would have to employ them. They'd have to give them the ID badge. Their HR would have to take care of them. And they would be employing, basically, retired law enforcement officers that would carry firearms.
If, let's say that we got an extra deputy for Prices Fork or Bellevue, in addition to Deputy Carroll, and then one more down in the Shawsville area, and then the law changed so that SROs could report to you, we could quote-unquote downsize the deputies out of the other, out of the elementary schools to SSOs?
At that point, without adding any more positions to the sheriff's office, that would mean that someone would be employed.
Be fired, right? Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. But that would save the county a fair amount of money. Is that correct?
It would save the, it would save the county money, but it would put me in a very, very terrible position.
How many deputies do you attrish? What's the right word?
Attrition?
Yeah, a year.
I could never answer that. That's totally dependent on retirements.
So, like, in the last five years, how many attrition have left the, well, you've been here three, is this your third year?
Yes.
Yeah, in your three years.
In my three years, the attrition has probably been anywhere from 38 to 45 people.
Gotcha. Are you all involved at all in Project Aware? As the school district, I mean, you all are, but is the sheriff's department involved in Project Aware at all, from the?
The sheriff's department?
Mm-hmm.
No.
Okay.
We are hand-in-hand with Help Save the Next Girl, which is another organization on that level.
Okay. Great. That's all I have. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Supervisor Shepard?
I don't have any questions. Just to say thank you for what you do. I know it's a tough job. I volunteered in the school for one semester with my wife, and that was enough to do me. That's all I got.
Supervisor King?
I don't have no questions, but thank each one of y'all for coming out.
Thank you. Supervisor Fidzikowski?
I really don't have any questions, other than I would like to have an opportunity to report of what we found at the school security.
Please, I think this would be about the right time to include that, if you feel comfortable with doing that now.
Yeah. At our last school security committee meeting, the subject of school resource officers came up, and because it's something that we need to decide on which direction we're going to go. We did this one year, and I really appreciate the report. I kind of expected it would be good, because I've been in your shoes. I've been there. I've taught at the high schools, and the middle schools, and the elementary schools as a police officer, and I know how the kids react. To me, the, of course, the, I'm going to go ahead and give my opinion first before I report on this. My opinion is, the best-case scenario would be to have an SRO in every elementary school. That is the best-case scenario. Unfortunately, it is also the most expensive scenario. To me, if security is the number-one thing that we want, there are other options. And you just discussed them, Sheriff, and I appreciate that. I would love to see part-time deputies fill that role. I think we would get, we could hire three deputies part-time for what it would cost to one. And we wouldn't have a lot of the overhead. And they would be under your control, in uniform. To me, it's a win-win. You did bring up the issues that prevent that from happening now. I believe the General Assembly is going to be looking at those things. I know we're pushing our legislators to consider it. The third option would be to hire the school security officer, and you're correct, that person would be under the school division. So, chances are, they would be in plain clothes. So, you wouldn't have the same effect with the kids that you would with a uniformed officer. Again, it is probably a much cheaper way to go, if that's a word I can use. You're getting a retired police officer, a recently-retired police officer. They wouldn't hire, you know, somebody over the hill like myself, but there are plenty of people that have just left that are, that could fill that role. They would need the assistance of the sheriff's office as far as firearms training and things of that nature. But that also is a problem for us out here in Montgomery County because of VRS rules. Now, that is, VRS rules prohibit, I believe, the 40-hour work week. And that's where the problem would lie, unless you were able to get some that could fill in on schools during that fifth day. I don't know. It probably would be a scheduling issue, but probably doable. But if our legislators fix that problem, which they, we were told at our legislative dinner, that they thought that was in the works, that people have been talking about that and trying to fix that rule. But still, it gets us a security officer. All three of those scenarios take care of security, and put somebody in the building that could handle a situation if it would occur. We have just got to figure out which direction we're going to go in. And there lies the problem. And so much of that, of course, kind of boils down to dollars and cents. At our last meeting that we had, there's been some progress in our public schools as far as hardening the buildings, and that was really good to hear. We do have some older buildings that would need some changes made to the actual building to make them a little bit more difficult to enter. People would have to take a different mental approach to security, and that goes for administration, staff, teachers, custodians, whoever's in the building. They would all be having to think that way. But it came down to, the superintendent asked the representatives from each police department, did they feel that SROs were needed in the elementary schools? And the two towns said no. They think they had it under control. As far as the way we have Deputy Carroll set up, those are two schools that are covered, but not full-time, not for the whole day. And I'm not getting into how you work that out. That's something that should probably be left unsaid. But we do have Eastern Montgomery Elementary School, which is out there kind of by itself. Now, yes, the SRO at the high school could respond. That would take a little bit of time, probably not as much as somebody having to travel from Christiansburg, from the office to get there, but it would be quicker. But to me, that's probably, right now, the one location that probably needs some attention. And again, I am not suggesting that we put somebody there full-time. I think we need to talk some more about how that could be covered. I know your deputies stop in at all schools. Which is why, if we, if the schools were to consider a school security officer in plain clothes, they still get contact with a uniformed officer, thanks to your deputies stopping by. And also, there, I guess there gets, just continued to be talking to all the elementary schools. So, there is contact there for the kids, not on a daily basis, which is really ideal and nice. And it would be good if that's the way we decide to go. But they would still have contact, and I think that's important. But, so generally speaking, the whole tone of the necessity of SROs as soon as possible kind of got scratched out at that meeting. I don't know how the school board's going to take that, or what they're going to want as a result of what was said at that meeting. I do not know. So, that's pretty much where we stand right now, as far as the security.
Supervisor Bone, you asked for this to be on the agenda. Is there any questions you have of Supervisor Fidzikowski or anyone else?
So, it's my understanding that the, I don't want to speak for the public schools, but that they're, and even Sheriff Parton reiterated, that they're not interested in having SSO. That's not what they do, and don't feel like they have the capacity to manage that themselves. So, but they're in an inconvenient position to say, oh, we want SRO officers, because maybe the funding for SRO officers may be discounted from their budget. So, they will welcome SRO officers to the schools, as long as it doesn't come out of their budget. And they may say, as much as, yes, we do understand that SRO officers in our schools are very important. I don't know how they negotiate that line for themselves. But would you say, Supervisor Fidzikowski, that it is best to have an SRO officer in each, or at least Eastmont, and potentially Bellevue, or to have a second one?
The only reason that I think that it needs some special consideration is because of its location. The towns don't have full-time SROs in their elementary schools, but they don't see a need for it. So, I guess you got to read between the lines.
Yes. So, my understanding about the towns, and I could be completely wrong, because I'm not, you know, immediately very knowledgeable about how the police departments are covering the elementary schools. But Blacksburg, for example, is such a condensed town, with however many deputies they have on the shift, they're pretty darn close.
Right, exactly. They would have a quick response, I'm sure.
So, they, you know, within five minutes can get to, you know, an elementary school, I would imagine, you know?
I'm sure that-
If they're not there already.
Yeah, I'm sure that's probably factored into why they said they didn't need one. Now, they're missing out on all- Now, they're missing out on all the other stuff, you know, the contact, even though their officers also visit the schools on a regular basis, so they do have a presence there. One thing that was brought up at the committee meeting was that they have a need for counselors more than they have a need for police officers. And that was mentioned, that they would like to have more counselors. I guess, as far as the risk level for elementary school, it's the lowest between all the schools.
What is, what's the lowest?
The risk level, for violence.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you're more likely to see it. As a matter of fact, they brought up statistics that said that, yeah, basically, in elementary schools, the risk is extremely low.
Even though, like, fresh in everybody's mind is Sandy Hook?
Yeah, but that has nothing to do with risk level. What your imagination can dream of is not risk level. And that, of course, was the worst-case scenario. But, one of the issues with Sandy Hook, and I didn't study it, but the way that person gained entrance to the building, if you can stop that person or slow that person down from gaining entrance, then you have time for police to respond, so Sandy Hook would have never happened.
Do we have the facilities in place to slow a person like that down?
They are working on that now, and they are making progress, and the newer schools kinda have that built in. And, of course, all future schools will definitely have that built in. So, I mean, to me, that, when you're thinking of your first level of defense, is you keep the perpetrator out, that's your first level. The second level is, you counter his intrusion, and that's what you do with police response
So, do you feel, in those meetings, those committee meetings that you've attended, that the MCPs people, representatives there, are walking a tight line of not requesting SRO officers because they're, quote-unquote, might be afraid that the funds for an SRO officer might come out of their budget, versus?
It was never mentioned, but, yeah, I could see that. And I can also see their reluctance to hire a school security officer. That was never mentioned either, but, yeah, they are not, I don't think they want to have somebody employed that carries a gun.
And part of this topic, for me, also is what you're experiencing on the committee, to make our schools safer for our kids, is the Project Aware seems to have made good progress for the kids that go through it, to have less suspensions and things like that, which might indicate that kids will be less violent, if I'm saying this correctly.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with that program. I don't recall it being brought up at the meeting.
Oh, at all?
I don't recall it. If it was, then it must have slipped by my brain, but...
I may have misunderstood your question as well. When you said "Aware," I'm equating that to another organization. I don't think, I'm familiar with the one.
Are you all intimately involved in Project, in Aware, right?
I know.
Yep.
I was gonna say, with General Albertson.
I know that this is being recorded, and you're perfectly welcome to address Supervisor Bone's question, but we wanna make sure that people who are gonna look at this later can hear what you had to say.
I was just gonna add, Earl, you mentioned "Aware," and I know at our secondary schools that have SROs, some of those folks do sit on, like our SAC teams, our student assistant teams, as a part of that grant, they are involved, if they have dealt with an incident that has involved a student, you know, so they, at times at the secondary level, are involved with those students and teams.
Does that include counselors and things like that? So...
That includes all of our counselors, and our partnership with Newer Valley Community Services, all of those things, are involved with that grant.
Do you know if that grant runs out, so that program may cease to exist?
It is a grant that we have to reapply for, yes.
I am familiar, they did speak of a grant that was getting, that was gonna end this year, and it had to do with them having the counselors, and they're trying to figure out a way how they're gonna keep those counselors.
Did they say how much that grant was worth?
I don't recall.
I wouldn't know that, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, maybe Sheriff Parton and Supervisor Fidjikowski can answer this question. The way that the law lies now, if we want any officers in, whether SSO or SROs in our elementary schools, they have to be SROs, if we want them to be there, meaning the Board of Supervisors wants officers in the schools, they have to be SROs at this point in time, is that correct?
Well, that's an interesting way of putting it, but, yeah, I guess you're right.
Pretty much the way the language is written now.
Yeah.
Yes. And I probably need to clarify also, when I'm speaking and saying the school system would not do that, I'm basically saying that based on a presentation that I had given last year, year and a half, to Chair Tuck and Dr. Meyer and Mr. Meadows, and we talked, we talked about the part-time possibilities, and it was decided at that point that, basically, due to the fact that the officers would be armed, or the retired folks would be armed, that was not an option. So, that's when I started looking at changing, at asking if the language could be changed.
Yes, and if that goes forward in the General Assembly, and they make those changes, that could happen, this year.
That's right, I get it.
And to me, that, again, that would be the best-case scenario, because that is the lowest cost for the most benefit, a uniformed officer in the school. That's, that would be wonderful.
I sincerely appreciate you all being willing to stay late and answer some questions here to help make things pretty, what I think, clearer than they have been, so thank you.
And I will add to what I said, that at these security meetings, they bring up a lot of things, the schools are doing behind the scenes, have nothing to do with police, and they're really, really good. They are working very hard to intercept kids before they ever get to a stage where they're going to get violent. Excellent job, that's why they want more counselors, because that's where it's happening.
And Supervisor Bone, when you commented that they don't want it to come out of their budget, but when they're 71% of our budget, the money's gotta come from someplace. And I understand what, whether we, if, let's say next year, we allocate three new officers, SRO officers, well, that would have been money that could have gone to the schools, to teachers, to those things. You have a pot of money, and when one entity is, we value education, and we're putting 71% of our budget into it, so it's hard for me to fathom how it wouldn't always be possibly coming out of their budget.
Well, I mean, there are a lot of things that we pay for, and maybe a certain proportion might be less, I guess, but not dollar, you know, it just seems like dollar for dollar just isn't, I understand where you're coming from, Chair Tuck, so thank you.
Thank you all very much for being here.
Well, I have something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your head over there.
See, this is something I've been concerned about for a long time, because you all know that I came from being an elementary school teacher, and I was there with all the drills and all the stuff. And it really bothers me when we talk about low risk, or no risk, or I don't see how we can lessen the value of an elementary child's life compared to Millen High School. That just doesn't do it for me. I think that the society that we live in has brought us to this time where we have police officers, we have church doors locked after a church service starts, and we have people with guns in churches, we have officers that are asked to do, at the Criminal Justice Services Board meeting in Richmond, in Alexandria, the sheriff's deputies are asked to go to churches on Sundays and patrol churches. Now, I'm really, really passionate because I don't want a single child lost, okay? And I'm gonna speak for the children, and, 'cause they can't speak for themselves. And I really think it's important, and I don't care if it's middle, I don't care if it's high or elementary, I feel that there needs to be a level of protection. So I can just put myself in the situation at Harding Avenue, 'cause I know that school. You say it takes five minutes for a police officer in the town to get there, I can tell you, a lot of damage could be done in five minutes, 'cause that's a wide-open school. So, when you're thinking of, well, you know, we can just get in the car and go over, let's think about what happens when you're going in the car from point A to point B, let's think about the traffic in this county, let's think about the times that you can't get there in five minutes. So I'm gonna continue to advocate to have a school resource officer in every school in this county, I'm gonna continue to speak to it, and it's something that you have to look at. Like, I keep talking about funding for things that are needed, funding for the future. Unfortunately, this is our future, this is what we've come to, not just in our county, but in our, in the state, in the country. And those children are precious, and I know they're precious to all of us, every one of us sitting here in this room, but I wanna speak, I want to be the voice for those children. And let's don't say they're, I mean, I guess you can look at the risk, but you never know what's gonna happen. Whoever knew what was gonna happen at Virginia Tech? We just don't know, there are too many people out there with too many thoughts that maybe shouldn't, shouldn't, they shouldn't be thinking, okay? That's all I'm gonna say.
I would like to follow with, you have to understand, though, that Virginia Tech had a complete police department protecting them. I guess what I'm trying to say is, in the real world, you can't stop everything, even with a police officer there sometimes.
Well, I agree with that, but you need to do as much as you can in a reasonable manner to provide a layer of protection, just like you were talking about redoing in the schools and that kinda thing that they're doing.
And that's where it starts.
That's being reasonable, just like the counselors, just like the programs, that's being reasonable, but law enforcement is another layer of being reasonable to me.
Chair Tuck, I'd like to say that I totally understand, the board has many issues before in every area, not just, not just law enforcement in the schools. And I really appreciate what you all have done, even if we're dividing Deputy Carroll between the two schools, and if you would, I would even appreciate it more if at some point, you all could advise me on whether or not that will be there next year, so we can plan around that accordingly. And Eastmont's always going to be an issue because of where it is. Supervisor Fidjikowski said, so thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care. Is there a motion to come out of work session?
Second.
There's a motion by Supervisor Biggs, and a second by Supervisor Bone, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Okay. Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Supervisor Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Folks, do we wanna keep pressing on? We don't have that many issues, keep going, or five-minute break?
If y'all ain't long-winded, just keep moving.
All right. The first item on new business is the ordinance return check fee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any, there's a motion by Supervisor Shepherd, and a second by Supervisor Biggs, is there any discussion?
Yeah, how much is it now?
I believe twenty.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five? Why are we wanting to move it?
Because the, I think the, it's a different question with Treasurer, and the cost of more, I think, I think his cost for going through all that is more represented by the fifty dollars than the thirty-five. State law recently changed to allow that increase.
Just a quick thing, if I write you a bad check, why did I do that?
Because you don't have any money.
Of course I don't have no money, where am I gonna get that other money to make that fifty bucks?
Well, you've got a very valid point, but I know if somebody, as a business owner, when somebody writes me a bad check, I wanna say my bank is charging me thirty-five dollars, that's what they're charging me, and then I have to deal with, if somebody gives you a check at that point in time, and it's for real value, that's a crime, okay? So, yes, you can go after the civil to recover that, but if it's for a current debt, that's a class-one misdemeanor if it's under five hundred dollars, and if it's over five hundred dollars, it's a felony. So, as far as this going the civil route, at least you can say, we could go after this criminally, or you can pay the fifty, you know, the fifty-dollar fee, that's probably up to them. But you're saying that there's money in the account, or you might just be saying, you're not very good about keeping your bank balance, and you didn't transfer money.
Yeah, but if you, if you charge him thirty-five dollars, whatever, if I write you a check, and you charged me thirty-five dollars, that thirty-five dollars, you're telling me, if I pay you thirty-five dollars, I can write you a bad check?
I'm winning.
All right? No, you're saying that you're going to have to pay a penalty for doing that, and by the way, you still owe the rest of it.
Yeah, I, just, my opinion, I don't think we need to change it.
Well, like I said, I don't want the taxpayer stuff to have to pay that fee.
They're not getting stuck with that.
They're not having, yeah, we get, I mean, the treasurer has to pay the bank fee.
If I write you a bad check, then I pay the bill, right?
Right, but I have to then pay the thirty-five-dollar fee to the bank, that means I'm out thirty-five dollars.
Which means I will be.
No, 'cause without this assessment, we can't bill them thirty-five dollars, plus, then I have to have an employee write you a letter saying you wrote me a bad check.
I'm just saying, if they had...
Okay, all right, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
No.
Supervisor Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Five ayes, one and aye.
Next is Midtown Redevelopment Partnership LLC Agreement Extension.
So moved.
There's a motion, and there's a second by Supervisor Shepherd, discussion? Hearing none? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Supervisor Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ayes.
The longest report of the night, county attorney's report.
Yeah, there, Mr. Chair, Merry Christmas to everyone, and a happy new year coming up.
County administrator's report.
I just have three items this evening, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, see you next year. That's all.
Lord of Supervisors. Supervisor Fidjikowski?
Oh, I'm first, huh? I just wanted to let Supervisor Biggs know, I did go to drug court last week.
Yay!
Finally. It was very interesting.
But not as a client.
No, not as a client, let's get that on the record. It was very interesting, I learned a lot, and I think the judge said that their first, or their graduation, their next graduation is, they haven't said it yet, because they're trying to get enough people to make a graduation, and because they're all staggered at different times. But I think he said February or March, somewhere in that vicinity, but he would let us all know that. And I think it's, it appears to be a good cost-saving measure for the county, so...
Did he say when the next one was gonna be, 'cause there's something about it, maybe changing it, 'cause it was during the holidays or something, or did they say? Or do you remember?
They didn't say, you know, they meet every two weeks normally, but, yeah, I'm sure they would have to adjust it.
Okay, thank you for going, yeah.
It was very interesting, and I do also wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Supervisor Biggs?
Same thing with Merry Same thing with Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, best wishes for the New Year. And we did have an event at the Animal Care and Adoption Center on Saturday from 11:00 to 4:00 with Santa and the pets. I was able to go over at 11:00 to 4:00, and I was with Jen and her kids, and we had to go visit all the cats and all the dogs and play with the kittens. But they had a really good event, even though it was foggy and everything, I think they had a lot of people come and six adoptions, so it's going well. And that's all.
Supervisor Bone?
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays.
Supervisor Shepherd?
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and God bless.
Supervisor King?
Merry Christmas to everybody. One thing about it, during Christmas time, staff, turn your phone off so the board can't get a hold of you.
Is that it?
Is it?
Well, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I look forward to next year. I look forward to being one of you, but not being the board chair. I'm sure whoever is the board chair will do things differently than I do. But different doesn't mean that it's bad or wrong. Difference is just different, and it might be a new day and a better way of doing things. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.